I will call the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody. If you can, stand if you're able and join us in the Pledgeable Legion.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda under public comment? Seeing no one.
Oh, I think we got one.
Yep. Can you turn up the microphone because we can't hear?
Yeah.
I'm asking them to.
So it's directed to you.
Okay.
In a post that you made on social media on your school committee page about us blind anti-maskers. Now, you're entitled to your opinion as we are entitled to our opinion. You have your resources that you find trustworthy, as do we, but to make a title and a comment like that about us and insinuate that we don't care about people that do suffer with serious COVID conditions, although we do believe that 99% of the time it's not a serious case and that has been proven in the data, we do recognize that there are those circumstances where people suffer, the way that little girl in Middleborough did, that you politicized two meetings ago. So you sit in your post behind your computer and make comments like that about us, not while you're sitting up there. And as far as I'm concerned, you're elected onto that committee by a community. You represent all of us, not just members of this community that have the same opinion as you. And to sit there and make degrading comments about us because you don't agree with the way we feel about that topic is appalling. And I don't believe that you deserve to be on the school committee and act like that.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. If you thought that the term "blind anti-maskers" was directed to you, then there's really nothing I can do about that. I mean, it was certainly directed at very specific comments that were made over the past several meetings, that's for sure.
Hi, I also wanted to thank Mr. Oakley for providing me with a very teachable moment for my kids. Thanks to your post on social media, we were able to discuss how not to behave on social media if and when they ever get that. Some of the salient takeaways that I was able to provide for my kids is that even when you don't use an individual's name, that this can still be a targeted attack as most everyone involved can figure it out through context clues. Your behavior sets an example so that it opens the door for bystanders to join in on this type of behavior when everyone now thinks it's okay to attack those other people that are different than you. Having different opinions, disagreements, and debate is not the same as using insults, name-calling, belittling, shaming, ridicule, or intimidation to win your argument. Name-calling is not only childish, but is also discriminatory when you target a group. It is an easy and ignorant way to marginalize, minimize, and silence someone who is different than you. This type of behavior is a violation of school policy, which is important for my kids to understand, but more important, what I explain to them, is that they need to do something based on what they understand is right or wrong. So regardless of the rule, I want my children to use critical thinking and recognize that they need to act in a way that is good, right, or moral, not because there is a rule, because sometimes the rule is wrong, and they need to figure out discernment. Attacks like this do little to solve conflict or disagreement, but do reveal the true character of the aggressor as well as the bystanders. So thank you, I was able to, you know, give them a real teachable moment and use somebody who is an elected member of the community as the example. So that was great. I wanted to speak to some of the points in your social media post. So by using, in regards to the individuals you insult by referring to as "blind anti-maskers" because they disregard the Arizona data, there's much data out there that contradicts your data, and we can hold up our different studies and support our different cases, and we would just butt heads. But for this reason, we have come here every meeting to push choice. So whether a child wears a mask precisely because their science, our science-supported position and our analysis of the risk of masks outweighs the benefit. We have never asked another parent or child to make a different decision for their child than what they see is in the best interest. But somehow the anti-maskers must concede and act in a way that we don't feel is in the best interest of our child. In regards to treating deadly viruses like deadly viruses and cloth like cloth, that is exactly what we are doing, Mr. Oakley. To your points, the best defense against a deadly virus is your immune system and supporting it through healthy lifestyle choices, because at the end of the day, if that piece of cloth fails you, what you need for protection is going to be your immune system. So you need to understand how to maximize your child's health through their immune system, through their lifestyle choices, not necessarily a dirty cloth across their face. And I will simplify again, cloth face coverings are under EUA, which means there's no evidence that they can protect you from a virus, and therefore they can't be labeled as such. And two years later, there's no evidence that has changed that, they are not a licensed product. Cloth does have the ability to restrict their airway, and I'm not going to get into the other harms that covering face has done for our kids, to our kids, because we've already covered that. Mr. Oakley, I am not against masks, but rather I recognize the limitations in each one of these masks and face coverings. Cloth or woven material can absorb some droplets, but not small particles, and they are not considered respiratory protection or PPE. Surgical masks have chemically bonded fibers, they are loose-fitting and meant for contact precautions, for splashes, for sprays, when used in surgical procedures or when treating a patient with droplet precautions like C. diff, not for aerosols like respiratory viruses. And a fitted N95, not your KN95 and not your non-NIOSH-rated masks, are rated to provide protection to the wearer through fit and filtration. They are highly restrictive to the wearer and require medical clearance, fit testing, and like all PPE, they must be handled in a very specific manner to maintain that high level of protection. They are a medical device and they are not rated for children to wear. Environment and activity of the wearer must be considered when calculating work-rest cycles, but we've just made these work-rest cycles arbitrary. We don't even have any data on how frequently kids need to breathe. But they are intended to wear in a contaminated environment, and they're not meant to wear as part of everyday life. It's when there's a hazard present. The hazard is everywhere. You cannot contain the hazard to just the school building. It's inside, it's outside, it's at Target, it's at the theater, it's everywhere. Finally, in response to you insinuating that we are negligent in our parenting or insensitive to the needs of others, we are neither. Your analogy that we have disregarded things that could keep our children safe, like not stopping at a train track, is an erroneous analogy for many reasons. For one, schoolchildren are 10 times more likely to die in a motor vehicle accident than they are of COVID, but we still all put them in cars. Even when taking every safety precaution while driving, there are variables that will inevitably be out of our control, such as a deer that comes into the road, a sudden downpour of rain, or vehicle malfunction. Even when we correct for these variables that make it safer, we cannot control them all. With COVID, we know there are variables that make an individual at greater risk. Why not correct for those variables before we make corrections for the low-risk group? Why not demand that every obese person lose weight? They have a choice of everything they put in their mouth and whether or not they take a jog or watch TV. Why not ban cigarettes or alcohol? Why not restrict those people from going into a museum or watching their kids run at their track meet, or go into a restaurant until their BMI is in a healthy range, or they quit smoking? Why aren't we controlling their variables? That would be wrong, wouldn't it? We can't do that. So instead, we force everybody to do what you think is the right thing to do. Wearing a mask in this scenario is more akin to you wanting me to wrap my kid in bubble wrap to ride the bus, because bubble wrap has been proven to prevent fragile things from breaking, and since children are fragile, it only makes sense to wrap them in bubble wrap. However, I don't believe that bubble wrap will provide any protection in the event of an accident. And just because you wrapped your kid in bubble wrap and they made it to school with no harm, it is more likely a result of the bus not getting to an accident than any effect of the bubble wrap. Now, if you suggested seat belts on a bus would increase safety, I would probably agree, and I would argue, I've been using a seat belt all along. I choose healthy lifestyle choices, nutrition, vitamins, and educating myself on how to treat an illness should they get sick. With COVID, I have them put their seat belt on, I do my best to live a healthy lifestyle, support their immune system, and I educate myself on how to treat viruses. Just because you cannot see the actions we are taking to protect our children does not mean that we are negligent, it means we're just not wearing it on our face. Nobody wishes ill harm on other children, indeed if they end up with a rare or severe case of COVID. Just like I don't wish harm from anybody for a car accident, cancer, suicide, which by the way, children are at six to nine times more likely to die of suicide than they are of COVID. Yes, Mr. Oakley, I'm very aware that there's a mental health crisis that existed prior to COVID. We didn't get to hit pause while we dealt with COVID, and then our reaction to COVID intensified an already significant problem, and we must balance what we're doing to our children to alleviate that and help them heal. We can't just put in school counselors and keep the thing that's harming them on. You have to do both, you have to remove the pressure and then help them heal. For many of you, you may not have read Mr. Oakley's post, but these are all points I'm making based on his post. These aren't random comments that are coming from nowhere, this is from his post. Finally, I don't spend a lot of time talking about vaccines in here, except in the context of DSE tying mask rules to a vaccine threshold. While Middleborough has yet to partake in this, for the most part, except for your most recent post, Mr. Oakley, I guess, DSE has failed to provide any other off-ramping mechanism other than the one that gives you privileges if you were vaccinated. Every time DSE created a policy that we were required to implement, such as tests or stay or masks, they tied it to a vaccine privilege. We should probably stop talking about white privilege and start talking about vaccine privilege and why that is also wrong. All of those things are wrong. So that privilege that comes with you being vaccinated is wrong, and that has been what I've been here arguing the whole time. I didn't ask anybody to take a mask off, I didn't ask anybody to do anything for their child that they thought was not in their best interest, but you're asking me to do something that I don't believe is in my best interest, and tying it to a vaccine is coercion. It's absolutely wrong to coerce individuals to participate in any medical interventions, never mind an experimental one, to gain equal access to society, including a public education. They worked around the law and bypassed safeguards such as medical and religious exemptions to manipulate people into taking an experimental shot. They made it difficult for parents to balance their work schedule so that giving their child a shot became the easier choice, rather than one that they made because they felt it was in their child's best interest. I have acknowledged that the school board has little power to change this, but that does not mean that you do not have influence or the ability to advocate against policies like this. These are discriminatory policies. And so while I recognize you can't just simply undo what they're doing, that doesn't mean you don't have the ability to advocate against discrimination. It is not my place to tell others what they should or should not inject into their bodies or that of their children. Everyone has experiences that shape their decisions, and I respect that our experiences are different, and I respect for different choices, and the respect should be mutual. The decision we make for our kids is not always black or white, it's often shades of gray. Data is not the only thing we base our decisions on, and sometimes what is right for one kid is not right for our other kid. Even quantitative data is open to interpretation. We can both look at a glass that is half-full, you can decide it's half-empty, I can decide it's half-full, we are both right and neither of us is wrong. But we have come to a different conclusion based on the same exact data, and that may lead us to take different courses of action. I realize from your post that you stated you aren't a parent, and so maybe you don't understand that we are evaluating our choices every single day, and sometimes we make wrong choices, sometimes we learn from our mistakes, but it's not just data. Everything for you is data, and it's not just data for us. That little one that comes home that is, you know, talking about, you know, being screamed at at school because her nose was peeking out because she felt like she needed a breath, that's stressful, all right? That one that's not being picked on because the teacher chooses to use a passive-aggressive approach and not allow them to participate in their education because they needed to decide whether they needed to breathe or they wanted a choice, they wanted to participate in class. These kids are under tremendous stress. A lot of teachers are doing a phenomenal job implementing it, but there are always some that use approaches that create more stress, fear, and anxiety, and we need to alleviate that. We need to alleviate the burden on our children from the screaming, from the passive-aggressive, from the behavioral control, manipulation, all of that. If you noticed in the community, everywhere else where children can go and adults can go and they can make their own choice, since this state of emergency ended everywhere else in the state, all that aggressiveness in the stores, that's alleviated. People recognize, you make your choice, I make my choice, and we've just moved on, but we're not doing that in the school. There is not an emergency here, and DSE actually proved their own point, that there is not an emergency because they're saying that the schools are very safe, we have little transmission, what was it, over 99% of the tests were negative. So how do you continue to justify that there's an exigent circumstances that they can grab unilateral power and declare that there's a hazard that exists in this building that doesn't exist in Target, or the theater, or the restaurant down the road? They don't have that authority, and that's where we need to push back. So I recognize you can't do all of the things I'm asking. I'm asking you to call DSE out on exigent powers, I'm asking you to tell them that they need to stop discrimination, it's not acceptable, and we don't have another off-ramp measure other than a vaccine is your way out, and that can't be. Coercion is wrong. So those are the ways we need to work together, which we have been, well, I thought we were, we sent a letter, we got a response, and now we need to regroup on what the next step is. And that's my approach to advocacy. So your approach to advocacy is to take to social media and attack the people that don't agree with you in what could be considered cyberbullying. I'm just going to keep coming here, I know it's annoying, but I'm going to keep advocating for what I think my kids need to move forward from this pandemic.
Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I would like you all to keep coming here. I think it's important. However, COVID is still spreading, we just had recent examples.
Did it say anything that it wasn't?
Masks do work, because the Arizona Public School mask data has been corroborated several times. Mask mandate versus no mask mandate, it works, it just does, it's settled. I understand that it doesn't work well, and excuse me, please, I understand that it doesn't work well, and 95s are the best, but it does work. So if anyone tells me that we need to protect our kids less, then I'm sorry, we're never going to agree, and I'll fight for those kids every time, and that's all I got to say.
So I think we have all seen over the past couple of years that tensions are high, social media is a awful place, and I think I have seen more forceful and derogatory and "you're not right, I'm right" posts about all of this than almost anything else, and it is not the way to move forward. Now, there were many things said that I don't agree with. One of the reasons why our schools are doing well is that masks are still required. The rate of infection and the rate of spread is reduced by the protocols that are currently in place. You used an example about obesity and how we can't ask people who are obese to do other things to become healthy, but all the science lately says that obesity is not a measure of anyone's health, that they are separate. So you used an example that is not correlated to what you're trying to say. And we have all heard session after session about how wearing masks are impacting our children negatively, but there is another side to this, and that is the side of the people who wearing masks is helping our children. It makes them feel safe when they are at school. It makes them feel that they are not risking the people that they are then able to be around without their mask on because they're as safe as possible at school. There are just as many kids who worry about being in a classroom with somebody whose mask is not being worn properly because of the increase in potential danger to others as those who don't want to wear the mask in the first place. The majority of the comments we have heard session after session have been from one side of the argument, and there are more than one side, as you said. So you are pushing for masks to be removed because it is harming our kids, and there is a whole nother set of kids who, if masks were removed before the science and the CDC and the state says it's safe to do so, would be afraid to go to school, would be just as harmed by the opposite. So I think it is time to stop saying the same thing over and over and over again when we all know and agree that we can't change the policy in this room. All we can do is advocate to the state, which you have been doing independently, members of our school committee have done independently, you have done together as a group. The policy has to come from DSE, they want to find an off-ramp, but we're not there yet. So until we are there, how about we focus on what we can do now? How about we focus on helping the kids handle the situation that they are given, just like you said, teachable moments. This is something that is a rule to go to school, so how do we handle it? How do we step up and make the best of the situation? How do we get them the assistance they need? How do we work with the school so that they have the breaks they need? How do we talk to the administrators? When there is a teacher who is harshly saying, screaming, "Pull your mask up," coming to the school committee meeting and saying something doesn't do the same thing as an email to Mr. Brannigan or Mrs. Latander and saying, "There was an issue at school today, can we discuss it?" So let's try to move forward, let us have the discussions together, let's stop spreading anger and discord and figure out together how we make the best of what we have in front of us until the conditions change and they say that we have other options. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Okay. We are following a rule. There are rules when you go to the school, there are rules you have to follow. Every school...
There needs to be a choice.
No, there does not.
Absolutely, 150% does.
And take mine off because I have a hard time breathing anyway, and this makes me incredibly nervous and dry-mouthed and horrified. So I just want to address the children who are so scared to come to school because they're so afraid of getting sick. I think that comes down to what is happening in their homes, and I think it's appalling that children are so terrified to come to school, and they're so scared of other people's air, that's obscene. What if DSE drops their mandates tomorrow? How are you going to help those children adjust to the super scary air around them? I just...okay then, so then do that now and let everybody have a choice. Then your Arizona study can be countered by the CDC study in Georgia, Mr. Oakley, where they found that there was no substantial, there was no significant improvement to the spread of COVID between masked and not masked, so, I mean, all day, tit-for-tat with that. I did come here to speak about your Facebook post, your little rant about people with different opinions, and your tasteless remarks about blind anti-maskers, "We're so callous and careless, geez, we don't care about anybody's kids at all," and how we're not showing up, you know, eight-point-whatever children in the town got vaccinated to the number of people who show up here to argue with you every other week. We stopped coming because you told us to our faces that there was nothing you could do, the mask mandate meeting, it's above our heads, we can't do anything about it, we're just following the rules. Why are we going to sit here and argue with you week after week? It's falling on deaf ears, it's not serving any of us. At the time, it was obvious that our anger and outrage was misdirected, that's what you told us. So we took our fight to our local reps, state reps, we've testified and written testimony to the joint committees and so on. And Mr. Young, you told us many, many, many times at that meeting that the 80% benchmark, that's intangible, you know, Commissioner O'Reilly had no reason, no leg to stand on, that was nothing to worry about, we're not going to get to 80%. 80% vaccination rate is not going to be tangible to lifting the mask mandate, we're doing the mask mandate and that's that. And now your co-chair is perpetuating it, he's making it your personal mission to push vaccines on our children by making fun and grabby graphics to dangle a carrot in front of the faces of the parents in this town, saying, "Look, look, we get to 80%, we're gonna, it's gonna be maskless school for the kids." It's coercion, it's disgusting. What I want to know is, why is it unacceptable for children to become hospitalized or casualties to something natural such as infection and disease, but you don't bat an eyelash to children becoming hospitalized and casualties due to a therapeutic still under emergency use authorization? Why should any child be harmed for the sake of scientific progress, for the collective, for the common good?
Is that a question?
That is a question.
Public comment is not question and answer time.
Okay, well, can you write it down and address it at some point?
You have the right to make your statement, and that's it.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna...dot-dot-dot. It doesn't. The matter of fact is, children are being harmed by these vaccines, of course not all, thank goodness, but in significant numbers, and VAERS can prove that. VAERS is a database that the FDA has trusted and has been using since 1990. Making false claims to the database is punishable by law, fines, and imprisonment under federal law. So anybody who would make a false claim would have to be pretty bold, right? What would anyone have to gain from that? What do any of us have to gain for begging to have a choice in our kids' health? Where there is risk, there must be choice, and there needs to be fair reporting of data so parents can make the right choice for their children. They have too much life to live to not take risks into account. I urge you to consider the comments made tonight, and I very much look forward to the end of your term, Mr. Oakley. I am hopeful that we can get someone in that seat that represents and supports the interests of the other 65% of the children not vaccinated in Middleborough Public Schools and their parents. Thank you.
I think that's the beauty of the democratic process, and I would never say anything else about it. If you don't like what I'm doing, I think that's the right thing to do. I just wanted to address two things that you mentioned that were specifically at me, and I think if you really look at my vaccine stat reporting that I've been doing for quite a while, I never say anything really about it at all, I just say there's an 80% limit. And actually, I think what you'll find is that my stance on vaccines is probably a little closer to what...
Ma'am, there's not a give and take. You had your choice.
You weren't allowed to answer, but now you can answer.
I can...
You had your choice, you had your opportunity, you're all set. Thank you.
You guys come back, remember, I'm gone.
Thank you.
So I like reporting information to people, I think it's helpful, I'm going to keep doing it. And I'll just say, just one more time, I'm going to stand up for these kids anytime, every time, and we just can't say that we literally just had examples right here in this town of people that got hurt from this. of people that got hurt from this and say it's time to just get rid of it all when we have real scientific data. And I know you mentioned the Georgia CDC study. The Arizona study was also a CDC study. And I won't speak on the Georgia study because I don't, I'm not aware of it at this moment. So I want to read on that. Okay, that's fair. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna protect these, these kids every single time. And I'm sorry that that's a negative right now. I hope it won't be in the future.
You cannot speak from the audience. If you continue, I'll ask you to leave. Well, relax with the talking when you're not supposed to. Yeah. Next item on the agenda is reports from school committee members. Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
I know I asked you this after the last meeting, and for reasons beyond our control, we couldn't have it on the agenda tonight. But as someone myself who has had mental health struggles during this pandemic, it is really important to me that people know what resources are available to them to help. Between these meetings, I got a chance to talk with Carolyn Lyons, Pupil Personal Services Director, at length about the mental health and SEL apparatus within our schools. And after discussing it with her, first, my confidence is very high that we actually have much better services in our district than many communities around us. But what came as unfortunately no surprise was that she referred to this period in time as a mental health pandemic, and I think that's absolutely true. Something important that I wanted to bring up, I am not the expert. I don't want to speak on these things. And, Mr. Chair, I would love if we could invite Carolyn and anyone she, she decides to a future meeting to talk about the resources. But one thing that I thought was very important that I think people should know is that something we've seen presented here at these meetings in the past interface is a program where you can get mental health referrals is currently experiencing significant backlog, which I also don't think is a surprise, unfortunately. And so they're, they're on hiatus right now. I just think it's important for people to know that. I had a little more written, but anyway, I would just really love if we could get something on the agenda where we could discuss all of the opportunities that people in this district and this town have to address mental health concerns.
Yeah, Ms. Farley asked me to, and so I'll make sure it's on the next agenda. We do have the budget committee, but we'll have a piece of it afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the two MEA co-presidents, Kate and Sam.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Just some things that have been happening lately. The high school just began the second semester this past Thursday, so we're excited to move forward to the second half of the school year. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. The past two days, we've had the biology MCAS testing done, which has been a lot of time, but is needed. So hopefully, the students will have done well on that, and we'll find out soon. And the Middleborough Education Association and the school committee are continuing negotiations of the professional contract at this point, and which will be followed by the ESP and the cafeteria contracts down the road. Kate?
Yep, that's it. Thank you. Let's see. Parent-teacher conferences at the elementary level are coming up at the end of this month, beginning the week of February 28. Plans are in the works for field trips at the elementary level. We've been lucky to have our PTA sponsor field trips, and we're really looking forward to getting out there this year. At the elementary level, we are also happy to begin a new program called Calmer Choice, which is a teaching mindfulness organization, and that will be for staff and students. MCAS is coming up soon. I think somebody mentioned that. And on a personal level, I wanted to welcome my senior intern to my class, Sophia Albert. She was a fifth-grade student in my class seven years ago, and I'm happy to have her as an intern this year. I think that's it. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Natalia.
So for this week, starting with MKG, MKG had a very exciting activity for their first-grade students this week. On 2/2/22, February 2nd, their first-grade students wrote their future selves a letter for a time capsule as these first-grade students will be seniors in high school on March 3rd, 3/3/33. The book fair was a huge success. Thank you to the volunteers that assisted the students in selecting their just-right books for them to enjoy. Information regarding spring clubs will be going out soon. Parents, please be sure to check out the weekly MKG newsletter for important news and updates. Next, for Nichols Middle School. NMS is excited to announce that their drama club is now preparing for their first play in two years. Any students that are interested in participating should reach out to Mrs. Weaver. Auditions are taking place on Monday and Tuesday of next week. Student progress support for trimester two will be available in Aspen on Monday, February 7th, at 3:00 p.m. On Tuesday, March 15th, 50 eighth-grade students will be participating in the National Assessment of Educational Progress. The next student council meeting held with Mrs. Latander will be on Thursday, February 17th. The next GSA meeting will be held on Monday, February 14th. And lastly, Nichols Middle School is hosting the 65th Annual STEM Fair this year. This event will be held on Wednesday, March 30th. For MHS, we want to congratulate both the boys and girls track and field teams for being named South Shore League Champions. Last Friday, January 28th, MHS Student Council successfully hosted their first bingo night. For anyone interested in joining stage crew for Mamma Mia! the Musical, please see the sign-up sheet on the bandroom doors. The sign-up sheet will stay up until tomorrow, February 4th. The All Worms Thing Project, put on by the National Honor Society, ends tomorrow. Boxes are set up outside of the main office for your donations. We are looking for gloves, hats, jackets, socks, et cetera. The following clubs will be taking place on Wednesdays at 2:00 p.m. Key Club in Room C149, GSA in Room C158, and Yes Club in C159. The members of the National Honor Society are offering a program to all students in all classes, allowing for weekly meetings with a one-on-one tutor. This is a free tutoring opportunity, and please reach out to Mr. Goldman if you are interested. Thank you. I didn't get back to you for next meeting with that.
Superintendent Report is up next.
Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience, good evening. I just have some COVID number updates. It's actually very encouraging in the community and in the schools. If you go back to last September, when we started this school year, we were right around 20 students, 20 active cases in the district. That went up and peaked in the 140 area, January 7th. Down to 76, January 14th. On January 20th, it was 47. And as of today, it's 22. So we are really in a sort of a bell curve and heading down and hopefully downward, downward, downward. The community data corroborates or supports that. During the period, Jacqueline Johnson, registered nurse, Middleborough Health Department, reported to me today through our coordinator of nursing that from the period of December 30th through January 13th, there were 204 cases that were reported. And during the last two weeks, January 20th to December, to February 3rd, excuse me, 68 cases were reported in the community. So certainly, it's a downward trend. I hope it continues. The holidays obviously didn't board us well. The Omicron variant really affected us. We had a lot of faculty and staff that were out. We were able to manage. But we are down to 22 active cases in the district. And again, hopefully, that will go down to zero, hopefully. That is certainly the hope. We do have a new testing program that we are starting, and it basically functions completely differently than really test and stay. It basically sends a test home to any family, for every student that wants them. It's an opt-in, opt-out, and it's entirely, you can be vaccinated or unvaccinated. It does not matter. We have approximately 400 students or 500 students, I think as of today, who have opted in, and about 300 faculty members. So those numbers keep going up. We had our first series of tests that went home yesterday. We're asking folks to test on Wednesdays. So if they are positive, there's five days there. They come back the next Monday or Tuesday if they are positive, if they are not symptomatic. We also have a symptomatic testing program that, again, is opt-in, opt-out, completely voluntary, that if a family, if a child presents with symptoms, COVID-like symptoms, they can get tested at the school, similar to a test and stay. Sort of small portion of test and stay is still left over with this symptomatic testing that goes on. So we have moved to this. We're in a couple of transition weeks here, and the coordinator of nursing is working with this program. We're ordering tests. We order tests through the state. They get delivered. So far, the deliveries have been right on schedule, which is good. We were worried about supply chain. We ordered an overage for our students. We ordered in the hopes that we had about 2,500, 2,600 tests that we ordered the first go-around. We knew we'd probably be over, but we didn't want to be under. So we'll have extra tests, and we'll just order less in the future. I also wanted to point out that the town of Middleborough is handing out tests on Sunday from 10:00 to 2:00 here at the, not here, but at the Nichols Middle School. And that will be on Tiger Drive. If anybody from Middleborough would like tests, they can go up and get them free of charge. I believe the town has over 9,000 tests that were provided to them from the Plymouth County CARES Act, and those are available free of charge to any individual. I wanted to say I was walking into a budget subcommittee meeting, and somebody had driven by the DPW and saw the sign, "Free COVID Tests at Nichols Middle School", and was knocking on the door and asking me if she could have her free COVID test. And I said, "You missed one flash, and it probably should have put on there 10:00 to 2:00 first on Sunday." So, but it is this Sunday. It was canceled last Sunday because of the weather, and it is this Sunday. So that's sort of the COVID update for the district, right where we're at now. Any school committee questions? Meg?
That's a question online. They wanted to know when students would be getting their tests.
Students will be getting their tests next Tuesday afternoon. That's our plan, Tuesday afternoon. And those will go home with students. And it contains two tests for two separate weeks. So every two weeks, there'll be a new test, test box. And again, that's opt-in, opt-out, vaccinated, unvaccinated. They're free of charge and available. So it's, it's a good idea to take advantage of it if you, if you'd like, if folks really would like to do that.
Next on the agenda is the 2022, 2023 school calendar with start date options. And that is before the school committee tonight. It is a third reading, if you will, and it is time actually for a decision.
So the only thing I wanted to point out was, we all did receive a letter today from Brianna who pointed out that the, the primary could happen Tuesday, the 6th. I called over to the State House and had a conversation with somebody, and they're not 100% certain. They'll, they'll have a better idea of when that's going to be voted on tomorrow. So I leave it up to everybody if they'd just like to wait or if they'd like to vote, and then we could discuss the 6th separately later on. Only because the problem with the 6th is we're going to have two polling locations in two buildings that day, and that could be problematic. That's all.
Yeah, we would need school off.
Yeah.
I don't see these in our drop-off.
Oh. Well, probably because they were in the dropbox previously.
Oh, so they're not in tonight's dropbox?
Okay. Meg, go right ahead.
I do, I think we should just wait. I mean, it's happening tomorrow. It's not, and we don't have to, it's not like, you know, it's May. So I think we have plenty of time to just kind of wait and see what happens, and then we look at it in two weeks.
Is everybody okay with that?
When we find out about the...
I'll know tomorrow when they're gonna vote on it. It sounds like, right now, it's scheduled for the 20th, but they're looking to move it to the 6th. They did it last two years ago because of making sure they handled military ballots and everything like that properly. I know it's a recommendation of the Secretary of State to make it the 6th, but the legislature needs to change that, so that's part of it. So like I said, they'd have a better idea tomorrow for me when it's gonna happen, so.
We'll do that. Any other questions? Go right ahead. So we'll wait on that.
We're gonna put on, put off the vote. Okay, I'll let Ms. Gagnon know that, so. Next on my report is a business and finance update from Ms. Sarah Hickey. She has a couple of things to talk to the committee about tonight, so, Ms. Hickey.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and school committee members. As you know, in December, we went out to bid on the MEK Chiller. The contract was awarded in January. Work will commence in April to be completed in June. Next week, on Monday, we have a request for proposals for before and after-school childcare that will be made available on, at 9:00 a.m. on the 7th, Monday morning. That is due back on March 2nd with the contract to be awarded shortly after. There are, there's a timeframe for when the vendor can obtain licensing, and we're looking to have a summer camp program beginning after the end of the school year. So that's a contract that, once we check references and go through the RFP process, there's gonna be a quick turnaround time on that.
Ms. Hickey, RFP is Request for Proposals.
Yes. Next Wednesday, we're going out to bid for the MEK Boilers. That, that invitation for bids will be available at 2:00 in the afternoon, and that is due back on February 28th. Once the, the bids are opened and the bid amounts are recorded, that information then goes to the engineer. We have an engineer that will make the recommendation to the, to the school committee on who is the lowest qualified bidder. After February vacation, we'll be going out to bid on bus contracts. So that's my, my work after the bids go out next week. That's my next section of work to do. Budget Subcommittee wrapped up this afternoon. Next week, Superintendent Lynch and I will finalize and proofread line item bud, the line item budget, and I'll be putting together the presentation for the budget hearing that happens on February 17th. An update on the SER III grant. That was a grant that I submitted on October 4th, and we didn't hear anything and didn't hear anything and didn't hear anything for a long time. I did get information back from the, our federal grant liaison. There were four things, three things we needed to resubmit to them. And then the fourth thing is the audit department of the Grants Division needs to go through our grant, our federal grant manual. And so that hasn't, they haven't gotten in touch with me yet, and that's not going to hold up the SER III grant. The, the big holdup, in my understanding, is that we have applied for a construction project, and our federal grant liaison is a very, very nice woman, but she's not knowledgeable in construction projects. So the Department of Education had to hire engineers to go through all the construction projects. So right now, our DESI, I'm sorry, our SER III grant is with the engineers, and they're going through the construction project that we put in there. And that's all I have.
Meeting is budget here, 7:15. It'll be duly posted because I approved the ad the other day. Any questions about the budget or budget here?
Comment on the budget subcommittee? I just wanted to thank all the principals and Sarah for doing so much work. I had asked Sarah for something a couple of weeks ago. She gave it to us like the next day. We had asked one of the department heads to get us something, and two days later, they had a list of everything that we had asked for. So I just really appreciate all the hard work everyone is doing.
And thank you to the both of you for working on the budget.
Thanks. I would like to reiterate that, but also to just thank the superintendent and the town manager for having, I mean, clearly such a great relationship, and it just allows this district to do some really great things every year. And, you know, Chapter 70 funds coming in and all these little things that people don't realize. And I think, what I would like to do is just encourage anyone in the, in the town to please come to that meeting because it really is an opportunity for you to ask questions about where money is being spent, how it's being spent, and what the justifications are. So, thank you. about where money is being spent, how it's being spent, and what the justifications are. So, thank you.
And to put it in perspective, the town will give us $2.1 million more next year than this year. So that's very good. But it's also part of our Chapter 70 funds.
Yeah. Chapter 70 foundation enrollment went up, and our foundation money went up by 2 million, 2.149 million, which is just an amazing amount. I've been at this job for seven years, and I've been a school administrator for 34 or thereabouts, and I've never seen a Chapter 70 increase like Middleborough received and like other communities have received. The state representatives and the governor have been thus far very generous with us. That enrollment is based on, that number is based on our student enrollment. It's based on our free and reduced data. It's based on a couple of different models that study such things, and the number is developed. And to get 2.149 million, or almost 11.8, almost a 12% increase over last year, is just an amazing number. So it allows us to continue to offer the services we have and perhaps provide some additional services. So that's actually a very good thing. So I also want to put a tag on it that this budget will be approved or disapproved here at the school committee through a hearing process. It then, we then go take it on the road, and we go to the Selectmen's meeting and the Finance meeting if they need us there, and we present our budget there. That either gets a thumbs up or thumbs down, and then it goes to town meeting. And that town meeting is the binding vote at the end of all of this in April. So I'm looking forward to that process continuing. So, and again, thanking Sarah for all her work that she's done on the budget thus far. It's not over yet, but it's, the yeoman's work is done, so. And that concludes my report this evening.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Then I shall move on to MSBA report. We really don't have anything updated from MSBA. We haven't had the meeting, and we have the meeting next week, I believe.
We have a meeting at 5:00 next week in the Selectmen's Room at the Town Hall. If anybody is welcome in this community to go to those meetings. We have had some community input in those meetings, but it's waned a little bit because people have seen almost the completed project. Again, the final touches on this project will come in the spring, and they involve a lot of work outside, including tennis courts, an outdoor basketball court, an additional field, and basically finishing up the punch list with Fontaine Brothers and their contractors.
Any questions? Then I'll move on to the superintendent search. So just so the community knows, I had sent a letter over the weekend to the school committee. I did have the opportunity to talk to a lot of the administrators and have many times lengthy conversations with them. But only one person from the administration decided to apply, and that was Carolyn Lyons. So I would thank Carolyn for doing that. And so I had pointed out to the committee, there were some questions that I had to start with that I wanted people to think about, and the questions were really the following. So I'm going to open it up that way for the dialogue to start with, and these are my questions. As soon as I find them. So my biggest questions were this. When considering next steps, the first question to ask is, was Carolyn one of the staff you hoped would apply? Do you believe her to be qualified, and would she make a good leader for our district? And so I'll go first. I'm probably the one who works the most with Carolyn at administration, and I would say the overwhelming answer to my questions to all three of them are yes. I had hoped Carolyn would apply. I do believe she's qualified, and I know her to be qualified, primarily because she is the person put in charge in the district when the superintendent's out. And I've, you know, I've had conversations with her over a period of time when the superintendent hasn't been around because he's been at conference or vacation. And I've also had lots of conversations over the period in time about the Special Ed Department and the areas in which she deals with. And finally was, would she make a good leader for our district? I think she has everything that I would check off that I wanted in a superintendent. So there's a variety of ways we can go about forward, but I would, I throw out those same questions to all of you to start with, to have that conversation. Go ahead, Mr. O'Quinn.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I agree with you on that. I had a, you know, a list in my head of who I hoped we would see something from, and Carolyn was certainly on that list. And every interaction, I'll just talk right to you. Every interaction I've had with you, I've always been incredibly impressed by the amazing amount of information you have, number one, but how you can just so easily call it up and use it in your day-to-day decision-making. I think that the size of the program that Ms. Lyons runs is pretty large, and I think that I would feel very comfortable looking at her as a candidate in this search. I understand we have just one, but obviously we still have to vet that. But yeah, no, I'm very happy to see that you applied, so thank you.
Anyone else? Meg?
Obviously, I don't have a ton of interaction with Carolyn outside of here, but I've had interaction with her staff. And her staff, that's just a testament to the type of leader that she is, because her staff is amazing. So as a parent, having to talk to their staff, I think that that's great that they're as knowledgeable as they are because it comes from her. But then, as a special educator myself, looking at it from that piece, I'm even more amazed because there are things that I still don't know. So, and I have to go and look up and check and recheck and all that, and she is just able to pull it up at the drop of a dime. So she was definitely one of the people I was hoping would apply, so I would absolutely support that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I agree.
So I'm really happy that you did apply. I'm disappointed that you're the only one, and not because I don't think you're a qualified candidate, but I would, I'm always a fan of some really good dialogues between any candidates, and I would have liked to have seen a couple other people that I had in mind, but I'm excited for that process with you, and I look forward to welcoming you into that interview process.
So I guess I'd like to, I'm glad Carolyn, you applied. I do want to let the public know that I'm looking, this is a full process. Like, I'm still keeping in mind, we should keep our options open. But I do believe that this is a good way to start, because if we all agree on a candidate that's internal, then I think that's a, then we can be all set. But there's still the option, we could go outside if we decide that to. So our options are open. And also, when I went to the school committee training program, the school committee, I mean, there's a lot of talk about what we can and can't do, but the school committee really has two jobs. One is to pass the budget, and the other is to hire the superintendent. So this is like our big, you know, this is our big decision coming up, and we will do everything we can to make sure that we get the bright candidate, and I'm happy with the way this is proceeding so far.
Any comments?
Being the last person to speak, yeah. I don't believe I've had much interaction with you yet. So, but I do, I do look forward to the interview process. Based off what everyone is saying, I absolutely believe that this is the right way to move forward.
And since it seems like the committee wants to move on with Caroline as the one candidate currently, then my suggestion to the committee would be this. I would meet with Carolyn. I would establish some timeframes that we would set up, essentially what we'd do with any other candidates that came into town. It would obviously be different because it was, it's an internal candidate. But what would happen is we'd set up, essentially, if you will, a couple of open houses. Where people have the opportunity to come in and meet with her, have a dialogue, ask questions, communicate. And then afterwards, I would meet with whoever was there and just get feedback from them. I would then, that would happen across a variety of spectrums, and I will start that as soon as I meet with Carolyn, just to make sure that that's acceptable to her. We'll set that up at the next meeting. I'll have an outline for you. That will also include some conversations with, I would say, key town departments, too, that usually work with the superintendent's office. After that, I would report back to you, and then we would set up a night where Carolyn would interview with just the committee. And again, as I said previously, that interview, there would not be public comment and dialogue. That's an interview for a position, so it's just with school committee members. And then we'd have a discussion after that. Does that seem like a plan that you want to go with? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify. I think I heard you write that there won't be necessarily like public comment during that. It'll be more of us interviewing Carolyn, but the public can see that. That's going to be at our meeting, right?
I don't mean the public can't witness it. What I mean is the public, because it's a personnel interview, the public can't make comments as they can in other things. Much like for the superintendent's evaluation, the public can't make comments then.
Got it. Thank you.
That's one. That's all. But the public will have opportunities to meet with Carolyn and have conversations with her. Okay? Any, that seemed, then Chair would entertain a motion to accept that outline and go forward.
So moved? Second?
Discussion. Discussion from anyone in the audience. Okay, then I'll meet with Caroline as soon as possible and set that up. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you. The next item was, I just wanted people to know that Teresa asked to have a discussion about the, a response to DESI, since we did, we had a discussion last time, but it didn't go anywhere. So I then talked to Teresa and told her I was going to move it to the COVID Subcommittee because it seemed to make sense to start that conversation there. And I know you guys are working on a date, Meg? Okay, great. Any questions about that?
Yeah, so, because Meg and I are both on the, well, Meg's on the budget committee. I'm on the negotiation committee, so the schedule's been kind of tough. But we do have a couple of dates in mind. One was Monday, the 14th, and Friday, the 18th. So if people would like to get back to us, those would be around 4:15, you said, you and Meg? So they'll both be there on 4:15, and I'd like to invite people to either send me an email or Mr. Ness an email, just so we get an idea of how many people are going to come. We have to have an appropriate space.
Okay. Thank you.
What's that? The February 14th, Valentine's Day? And then February 18th, it's a Friday. So it's a Monday and Friday the week after, next.
At 4:15?
Yeah, both would be 4:15.
Go right ahead.
Reiterate that. People would need to get back, too, so you can post that at least three days, I believe, in advance?
We need 48 hours.
Right, so at least by next Wednesday would be ideal if you were going to meet that Monday, just so that people know.
Yeah, so the way the public meetings work is, you have to give 48 hours of notice, not including weekends, to the town office, and we have to, we have to get a location reserved. So it takes a day or two to get the reserved location. We got to post the meeting in time for it to be a legal meeting. So if we did the Monday, we'd have to know basically by this Monday. I would say Monday or Tuesday, we should be looking at a place to have it and posting it by midweek. Okay, so that's why it seems like these dates are far off, but they're really not.
Right. Okay. Chair, will you entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second?
Discussion other than the consent agenda is just Middleborough High School Student Council Flyer Day for February 14th, and Hat Day February 18th for the Nichols, which is pretty good. Those are usual. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Does anybody have, we're going to take up the action item, the school calendar, at the next meeting. Hopefully, I will have a information. I was just checking to see if I had anything now. They said they'll get back to me, so there you go. And with that, Chair, will you entertain?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, I think there was a number eight there.
Oh, did I miss any? Oh, so all I wanted everyone to know about is, just make sure you saw, was MASC is running the professional workshops. They're Friday learning lunches. They usually run 12 to 1. They've actually been pretty good. I've gone to a couple, I think this one's on the budget. So if people have time and are interested, it sort of gives you an overview of the budget to look at. Most of the learning workshops have been pretty interesting and wide range of topics. And, oh, I take that back. This one is the MIAA with the new director of the MIAA. Who was the superintendent in?
In Fairhaven.
In Fairhaven.
Mr. Bob Baldwin.
So if you're interested in learning about how the MIAA, I should say, worked, and they're making changes, listen in. It's not a bad, you know, it's like a podcast. And then you can pick it up afterwards if you can't be there for the 12 o'clock. So good for ride homes, Meg.
I believe they do record them.
Nice.
Good for ride homes. With that, any other que?
I just want to make a comment that since next meeting is the 17th, it's the public hearing on the budget, and that's really the big show.
Yeah.
So please, public, this is probably one of the most important meetings we have all year to look at the budget. So please come for that.
And Meg, you have a question?
Yeah, there was a question online. They were just wondering if the state of emergency affects school tomorrow, so.
Say that again?
If the state of emergency is going to affect school tomorrow.
I have been here. We had a budget Subcommittee meeting that started at 5:00. I have not seen a state of emergency issued. And if it's been issued, then there may be an early release tomorrow. And I'll try to announce that tonight if that's the case. I'll head back to the office and grab my emails, and if it's going to be an early release, then we're going to, we'll do an early release on the schedule that we have. Always had early releases on, so the traditional early release schedule. But I don't think it's going to be a real issue until later in the afternoon. I was hoping we'd get streets sanded and salted prior to the ICE, but if it's a state of emergency, then we can certainly do that. I will, I'm also on the line with all of the superintendents in southeastern Mass, obviously not now. But I'll be heading back to my office right now to go check things out, and if it's the case, then I'll try to get an announcement out tonight.
Thank you.
Yep, prior to 9:00.
I did, thank you. For the budget meeting next session, is there a way for the public to get access to the proposed budget in advance? I don't always have good luck getting things up in advance in the room, so if I could load something up before I got here, it would be ideal.
The answer is yes, and Sarah will explain.
So as I had said earlier, Budget Subcommittee just finished up. We met from 5:00 to 7:00 today, and Superintendent Lynch and I will be finalizing and proofreading the budget. And then once we have the line item budget that's going to be going to the school committee, that will get posted on the district website under the Business and Finance section as the proposed budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
So if you bookmark that page, it's really exciting because it gets the proposed budget, then the approved by school committee budget, then it gets renamed, approved by Selectmen, then approved by town.
Do I get to see your spreadsheets, too?
No, that's what, it's a very colorful.
Big old spreadsheet? All right, thank you.
It's a PDF of my spreadsheet.
And I should also point out, too, for those who aren't connected to the internet, we by rule have to have a physical hard copy of the budget in the executive offices for, I think, the day before or something like that, so people can actually go in and peruse the budget, too. And as part of my job, I have to make sure that that's physically there. I haven't had to yell at Sarah about that at all. Any other questions? Seeing that. Chair, will you entertain a motion to adjourn? Second? Do I hear a second? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you, everybody. And again, the Thursday, the 17th, is the next school committee meeting. At 7:15 will be the budget presentation. Thank you.